This is the Orlando Sentinel Editorial Board meeting with the candidates, four of them, for Ocoee City Commission in District Four. So I'm going to, let me just introduce the candidates quickly and then they'll each take a minute to talk about themselves and then we'll ask some questions. Lori Hart is one of the candidates, Joel Keller, George Oliver III is the incumbent, and Keith Richardson is the other candidate. So thank you all very much for participating in this, we do appreciate it. Ms. Hart, would you like to start with a self-introduction?
Sure. Once again, I'm Lori Hart. I am a 27-year resident of the city of Ocoee. I'm running for City Commission for District Four. I am a graduate from the Florida A&amp;M University in the School of Nursing, University of South Florida graduate in Biology, and a UCF graduate with my Masters in Education in Science and Mathematics. I have been married to a wonderful gentleman by the name of Aegis L. Hart for 27 years, and we have three beautiful daughters. And my aspirations for the city of Ocoee is education, not only for children but as for adults as well, and also the environment, and maintaining the environment as well as ensuring balanced growth. Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much. Mr. Keller, would you go next, please?
Yes, thank you. My name's Joel Keller. I'm the former Commissioner for the city of Ocoee, District Four. And I've been a resident for 30 years now here in Ocoee. Been married to my wife Laura. We have two children. Been married to Laura, I should say, for 36 years now. We have two children, Christopher and Danielle, who have gone through the Ocoee school systems. We have been involved in the Ocoee through various committees, for the Police Advisory Board, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for basically the last 21 years. And I'm looking forward to getting back on the commission, finishing some of the stuff that we started as far as the downtown. I think it's important, one issue that I'm looking at is zip codes. Right now, we have seven of them in Ocoee, and that affects people's homeowner insurance rates and things like that. So looking to get back in there and finish some of the stuff that I had started before.
Okay, thanks very much. Mr. Oliver, could you go now, please?
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Again, my name is George Oliver III, and I am the incumbent. I've been a City Commissioner in the city of Ocoee for the last three years. I'm also a United States Navy veteran. I became the first African-American Commissioner in the history of the city in 2018. I'm also a civic organizer, a volunteer, I've also been a youth coach in the city of Ocoee. I've held over 10 years plus of public service in my community beyond being a Commissioner. Also, I'm actually running right now on a five-part agenda that I'm actually pushing for this particular election cycle, and it's going to be effective leadership, which is like having a spirit of service leadership with a sense of urgency. I also believe that it shouldn't take over 30 years to repair roads and different things of that nature. I'm also running on transparency with financial accountability, holding our leadership accountable for the spending of our tax dollars. I'm running for economic development, economic development as well as empowerment, attracting new sit-down restaurants and new businesses to the city of Ocoee. I'm also looking at community involvement, or community empowerment, empowering our community and all citizens to engage in the political processes with the city. And also, I've been a champion of youth programs. I started the first youth council in the history of the city of Ocoee, providing constructive means for our youth to have a voice in the decision-making processes. I hold a Master's Degree from the University of Phoenix, also hold a Bachelor's Degree from the University of Phoenix, Bachelor's in Business. I'm a fellow of the MBA, I'm sorry, from the University of Phoenix, also hold a MBA, I'm sorry, a Bachelor's. I also have two Associate Degrees, Legal Services, and also one is in litigation, one is also in transactional. I've served on the Florida Supreme Court, I'm a certified mediator. I recently retired from Deloitte &amp; Touche as a Pharmaceutical Compliance Manager, and I'm currently a teacher with the Orange County Public Schools, teaching in the middle school. My wife and I have been married for 28 years. We have six boys, also have six grandchildren, and we are deeply embedded into the Ocoee community, and I want to continue to maintain my service in the city of Ocoee.
Thank you very much. Mr. Richardson?
Hi, thank you for inviting me. My name's Keith Richardson, and I've been a resident of Ocoee about 19 years, been married for 40 years. I have a son and a daughter. I am Vietnam veteran, era veteran of the United States Marine Corps, served in the American Embassy in Paris, France, and also Counselor General in Leningrad, Russia during that time. Have an Associate Electronic Engineering Degree, and worked 25, over 37 years in that field of work for local and global companies as a technician and a manager. And I am currently serving as the Associate Pastor at a local church in Apaca, Florida. I've also served as a pastor at the Orlando House of Prayer in Ocoee, Florida for a number of years, about 12 years. The reason why I got into the race is twofold. Someone that I know very well, who's very well-connected to the city of Ocoee, actually asked me to get involved. And after some consideration, and having lived there for a period of time, I thought that it would be a way to give back to the city, to help continue some of the progress that I've seen since I've lived in the city with regards to growth, residential growth, with regards to some of the economic changes and development that I've seen, and also some of the concerns regarding the infrastructure, especially what it relates to traffic. So I just want to be a part of that, help continue to see the city of Ocoee grow in a balanced way, and in a way that serves the community.
Okay. Thanks, all of you, for those summaries. I'll start with a question that's kind of a standard question for us. I'll work my way backwards since we have several people, and try to mix up the who goes first and last, and in-between. But I wanted to ask of you, in a field this crowded for a City Commission race, could each of you talk about maybe what is a key difference or differences between you and your opponents, and to the extent that you could be specific, and not too general about it? I think that would be helpful for people who are deciding, and for us. So, Mr. Richardson, could you take that question first, please?
Sure. Not knowing a lot about the opponents, I will speak specifically why I think that I am a good opponent. I've spent over 30 something years in the industry, dealing with issues on a daily basis, where walking into situations that I have to resolve, bringing partnership between my company and other companies, dealing with all types of personal issues with the customers and equipment issues. So I had to navigate and be able to deal with situations like on the spur of the moment, for one thing. Secondly, in being an associate, I have a keenness of how to listen to people, notice be able to take in their concerns, take in their needs and their desires, and come up with reasonable solutions for their situations and their circumstances. As far as I'm concerned, my outlook on life is there's no problems, there's only challenges, and challenges present opportunities. And we are, whatever capacity we serve, we have the ability and the opportunity to make resolutions and find solutions for those challenges.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Oliver, could you go next, looking for some key and specific differences between yourself and your opponents that might assist voters in making a decision?
Well, I think that's a very good question. It's also a very reasonable and fair question. As far as what makes me different is the fact that I came into this office for a three-year term. Within three years, I have accomplished a rolodex of things that we've done besides being the first African-American, but just facilitating, helping implement the Ocoee Masquerade Proclamation. I've done things like established the city's first youth council, created and implemented the city's youth summer job programs, donated the rights for the city to use the 50 West logo and the name. These are just a few of the highlights of some of the things that I've done in the short time that I've been there. Now, what makes me different is the fact that the first time I ran for office, I ran on my word and a promise. This time, I'm actually running on my work. The work that I've done, it actually stands for itself and it speaks for itself. Now, as far as my other opponent, other opponents is concerned, Mr. Richardson, I don't really know much about Mr. Richardson and what he's done in the city of Ocoee, but I can say that the former Commissioner, Mr. Keller, has sat in that office for almost 15 years, and looking at what he's accomplished versus what I've accomplished, it pales in comparison. I've accomplished a laundry list of things in three years that he was not able to accomplish in three years. Again, there's programs that have been put in place that the city's never seen before, the city's never heard of these type of programs, and for one, they just didn't even know how to handle these programs once I brought them to the surface, but we were able to work together and get all these programs to come to fruition. Now, as far as Mrs. Hart's concerned, again, I've been in the city for 20 years myself, and I started off as a youth football coach and baseball coach, soccer coach, so I got to know a lot of the parents, the kids are all adults now, but I got to know a lot of the parents through their kids, and, you know, and been able to work with the parents through the years, but what I've done. So as far as Ms. Hart, I'm not really sure what she's actually done in the community. I know she sits on the Human Rights, Human Relations and Diversity Board. Beyond that, I just don't know, but as far as my record is concerned, you can always go to the city of Ocoee's website, ocoee.org, look at my bio, and you will get a long list of things that I've done in only three years. That tells you that I've been out working for the people in the city, and for me, it is a non-stop thing that I do every single day, even though it's a part-time job, I actually do this on a full-time basis.
Okay. So Oliver, I just had a quick follow-up. Do you have a campaign website or Facebook page or something where these things you've mentioned are listed? Because I looked before the meeting and I just couldn't find it.
Yes, it's www.votforgeorgeoliver.com, the number four.
Okay. So, Mr. Keller, the question is, what makes you different from the other candidates? And, you know, what can you say to voters that would distinguish you from them and make them want to vote for you?
I think the answer to that is I'm the, I've been the fighter for the citizens of Ocoee for a long time. Things that I've done in the past, when FEMA came by and changed the flood zones in the city of Ocoee, and it increased the large number of people's insurances on their homes because they were now in a flood zone where they worked before, I fought FEMA on that and won. We got it reversed, and they retracted what they had added to the flood zone, and these people's insurance went back down. When the county wanted to put a garbage transfer station across from, on McCormick Road, across from McCormick Woods, I was the one that led the fight on that to stop that from being accomplished. We stopped that, the county put it on hold, hasn't come back off hold ever since. When the city of Ocoee wanted to actually get rid of the fire department, and they wanted to send it over to the county, I was the one who fought and led the fight to keep the fire department in the city of Ocoee. We won that, won that fight, actually got a 5-0 vote, even the people who originally had wanted to see us out, get us out of having the fire department, voted for me because they saw that it saved money and was the best way for our fire department. So I've been a constant fighter. With the zip code issue, it seems to get lost in there. I actually got that out of the house with the help of our lobbyists that we have in Washington. I worked with our lobbyists in Washington, got it out of the house, and it went into the Senate. Unfortunately, the Senate tried to turn the bill into a postal reform bill, and at that time, Senator Rubio was running for president, so we didn't quite get the Senate support that we needed. Since then, nobody has really brought that back up, nobody's been pushing on that. That saves people money for their insurance on their homes, on their cars, it makes life easier. When you have seven different zip codes in the city, people, when they try to get things like sandbags during the hurricane, and you come in and you present your license, your license says Apaca, or it says Winnebago, or something like that, it makes it more difficult for you to get the supplies that you need from the city that you live in that they're supposed to be giving you. Same thing if, when you try to join any of the teams at the Beach Center or something like that. These are the things that I have fought for, that I keep fighting for, and have gotten things through. In all the cases, I've managed to get it through. The zip code's still how to work on, but the rest of it, I've shown that I'm a proven fighter, proven leader in the city, whether it's personally in fighting cancer, or in beating that, or actually going out there and showing what I can do to make sure what the citizens need get accomplished. I'm the fighter, I'm the leader, I'm the survivor that does that for them.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hart, we're back to you, looking for differences between yourself and the other candidates.
Thank you. First of all, the difference between me and the other candidate is that I am a mom. I'm not a politician, I'm running as a mom, a mother, and I'm sure I can relate to many other mothers out there. Moms face a lot of challenges each and every day. In fact, we wake up, we eat challenges for breakfast. So therefore, as a citizen of this community, we want, I personally want to make sure that we have balanced growth, that we have the essentials that we need as community residents to be able to have our own grocery stores, our retails to go to, entertainment for families, have our gas stations, and also have our police and fire departments, barely here in town. No disrespect to Mr. Oliver and Mr. Keller, but I've been in their district as a resident, and I must say, I don't know them. I don't know them. I know of Mr. Oliver because my recent, me being part of the Human Relations Diversity Board, and I had the opportunity to meet him as he came and set on our visit, I came to the meetings. But the thing I hear that most community citizens want in the community is to know they're, know who's representing them, and that's something that I definitely will like to change. I want to know, let the people know in this community that they will see me, I will be present and engaged. I want to be able to be there, and, you know, I've been active in the schools for just about, since I've been here, as a PTA member, Sec. Secretary, going out supporting shepherds, and that's how I get to know a lot of parents and the kids. I have so many supports from my young people and from the parents, not only as an educator here in Ocoee. I've been blessed to be here in Ocoee to teach our kids in the community, so it makes me feel special that I'm also contributing that way. But also, as a registered nurse, I've served this community over 20 years as a registered nurse. But the thing is, what I hear, who, you know, is, is really, I should say sad, when I'm going around and they asking me, "Oh, is it election time? Who's the Commissioner?" They don't know, they don't know. And I want to make a change to that, so that people can know, so they can know who to come and ask questions to, as to who, when they have concerns. Because I am concerned about what they are faced with and what they desire to, you know, know and do, and that's one thing I would like to change, that the city will be able to inform the residents of different things that's in the city, as to what's available to them, because a lot of the residents don't know. So basically, my goal is to not only promote balanced growth, but also focus on the education of that, so that we'll have an opportunity to get to know your city and come into different seminars, so they can know what's available to them, also maintain our environment, to make sure that our waterways are kept. We have so many water basins in the city of Ocoee, and I think we have maybe four or five lakes that have drainage, so we want to make sure that we maintain our water, our waterways, and our roadways, and so many things, and keep industrial businesses out of our residential areas. So there's so much that I would like to, that I'm inspired, it's my aspirations to do for the city of Ocoee, but I want to serve the people. I've done this all my life as a registered nurse, as an educator, and I want to continue to do that. You know, I appreciate, you know, the fact that I have this opportunity, I'm running because I know that I can contribute to the city of Ocoee, and I want to continue to do that. I've done it all my life, and I will continue to do that.
Okay. Thanks very much. I have another question, I guess if I could ask you all to be fairly brief, if you can, but it's a related question, I guess, in some ways to the answers you gave, so I might be asking you to repeat yourselves. But I wonder if you could identify what you think is the chief problem that's facing Ocoee right now, and specifically what you would propose to do to address it. Mr. Keller, we'll start with you. You've talked about the zip code issue a little bit, I don't know if you think that's the biggest issue or not, but maybe you could, maybe you could talk about what you think is the biggest problem that Ocoee needs to overcome.
I think probably the biggest issues that we have are getting the small businesses back open, getting more small businesses into the city. I think the way we do that is through the downtown redevelopment that we were working on, making sure that we grow that properly, as we had done with the community involvement when we started the redevelopment. We had meetings with all of the citizens to determine what is the way they wanted to see Ocoee grow. Part of that was getting the small businesses, getting the restaurants, all of that comes as part of that revitalization. So the big push that we have to do from the citywide is the revitalization. Besides that, I think you, in the District Four, I think you land up with the issues of the roads itself, finally getting to, finally got approval after all of this time getting the widening to Clark Road. We're looking also at whether or not we need a traffic light at Hackney Prairie and Clark Road, that's where the school is. It's very difficult as it stands right now to get out of Hackney Prairie and onto Clark Road if you're trying to make a left-hand turn. So things like that, I think, are the important issues within the district itself. And then as a whole, I think also the zip code, just because I think it will help unite the community all as one, when you're all, when everybody could say, "Yeah, we're all 3-4-7-6-1." And just the ability to be able to use all of our facilities more easily for all of our citizens. I think those are the big issues, but definitely working on the downtown so that we can get the small businesses and the restaurants, and more people working again.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Oliver, same question. What's the chief problem facing Ocoee, and what would you propose to do about it?
Well, I tend to agree with some of the things that Mr. Keller pointed out. I also want to point out one thing, too, is one of the things I've actually implemented as a City Commissioner from day one, I started doing Town Hall meetings, which they've actually, no other Commissioner has ever done this before. I started doing Town Hall meetings, inviting all the residents for District Four to come out to meetings every single year. So Ms. Hart did mention that people want to know who their City Commissioners are. Well, you know what? The thing about it is, I sit out in Publix at least once a month, and I hand out flyers and different things like that, let people know that there are Town Hall meetings, there's ways to connect with the City Commissioner. So as far as visibility, I've always been accessible and visible with the city. Now, some of the major things that we look, that we deal with in the city right now has to do with infrastructure. We have, we have record growth right now in our city. We're turning over $200 million worth of dirt in the city every year. So what we need to find is balance between our growth and our infrastructure. So what I have done is, I've actually came up with a plan to work with the city and different developers that they come in, to come up with a plan to look at the things like, when you're coming to build a community of 377 homes, okay, tell me about, before we start doing any vertical bills, what are we going to do about infrastructure? Where are you going to put a light at? How are you going to widen our roads? How are you going to add left-hand turn signals? How are you going to partner with the community with our infrastructure? I think that's going to be some of the biggest things that we deal with. Now, we also have a downtown project that's coming up, and I agree with Mr. Keller that it is important that we get this downtown project off the ground and keep it moving. Again, I'm running, one of my mantra is running leadership with a sense of urgency. It shouldn't take us this long to do these things. Again, we've had a surplus, a good amount of surplus for many years in this city, and yet it's still, look at our downtown, it still looks the same. Now, the three years that I've been in office, we have actually gotten Clark Road not only widened, it's actually, matter of fact, we just signed that contract Tuesday. Clark Road will be widened within 18 months. Clark Road has been extended all the way through from Clarke Corner Court all the way to McCormick. We're getting a light at the corner of Ingram Road and also Clarke Corner Court. These are things that have been needed for 20 years, and these things have gotten done in the last three years. So infrastructure and the balance between our growth and our infrastructure has to be probably one of the top priorities in the city, because we don't want to be known as a city of a gridlock. It's good to have all these great things that we want to have, we want to have our grocery stores, we want to have our gas stations, we want to have our retail outlet, but the problem is, if you can't get to them, then you're going to have problems. So these are some of the issues that we deal with, and I think retail economic development would be, have to be second on that list. Getting more sit-down restaurants, which I have one coming up, Mrs. Krabs, we went out, went out of the city, got outside this box, and go out and talk to these people, let them know, "My city is craving for this type of business. Will you take, will you take a chance in coming to our city?" And they said yes, and they're on the way, they're coming. So those are some of the things that I've been doing. Every single day that I wake up in this city, I wake up every morning asking, "What do I need to be doing for my city?" Every single day, and I guarantee you, I'm finding something to do in this city with the road repairs, sidewalk repairs, adding streetlights, trimming hedges around our streetlights, just getting out and touching people every single day. So every month, I'll go throughout my entire district, and I'll stop and talk to people. I know them by name, I know their families, I know their kids that have graduated from high school, I know they're going off to different colleges. I know all these people in every single, I have 32 neighborhoods in my, in District Four, and I guarantee you, I know at least five to 10 families by name, and I've sat down with them in their living rooms, on their porches, every, since I've been a City Commissioner here.
And, Mr. Oliver, if I could ask one quick follow-up, and I'd ask you to be brief, if possible. I think you were saying during the first part that you wanted to help make development pay for the infrastructure they need. Did I understand that correctly? You want like a new housing development?
What I would like to, what I like to see is, when they come forth with a new development plan, they have to come to the city with an infrastructure plan as well. A lot of developers come to the city, they want to develop, but they have no infrastructure plan whatsoever. I think that we should hold some developers accountable for having an infrastructure plan along with their development plan. It happens all the time, I've been seeing it since I've been there, so I think that we need to find balance between the growth and the infrastructure, and I think that's a plan that would actually work for all citizens, as well as the developers and the city, that to make sure they have that plan while they're, before they actually build.
I think his question is, who pays for the infrastructure?
I think that, that would be, I think it would be a combination of the, you have impact fees. So looking at the impact fees, every developer knows what it's going to take to build out their development, based on the, based on the footprint of the land that they're coming in with. So why not say, "Hey, look, not only, in addition to the impact fees, would you partner with the city to say, 'Hey, look, we need a light there. If that light's going to cost $250,000, why can't we actually partner with that and actually split the cost down the middle?'" And if the county is involved, why can't we split it three ways?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Richardson, we're back to you. The question is, what you see as the chief concern for the city of Ocoee, and what you would propose to do about it?
Well, it's pretty obvious, just driving around, that we are experiencing a lot of growth, especially in District Four, driving around. I've seen open lands that used to be groves and stuff that's cleared out, I've seen new communities going up. So obviously, we're growing, and we're growing, it seems, at a pretty fast pace. And I agree with Mr. Keller and Mr. Oliver that, you know, you want to have balanced growth, you want to, you don't want to be overrun by the growth, and then you can't support the growth that you have in the city. So we definitely So we definitely need to look at infrastructure, you know, the roadways, and we need to forecast for those kinds of things, like getting together with the, uh, city officials, getting together with, uh, prospective, uh, uh, business owners and developers, and start, start to not only just deal with now is here, but forecast out as to what that may look like in two years, three years, four years from now. And it's just going to take a series of meeting with people on a consistent basis to look at where we are and what may be coming in the near future, and how do we, uh, map that out to make sure that we keep that balanced growth? And, and it has, it's the same with, uh, incoming businesses. One of the other things that I think we have to be mindful of is, anytime you have growth, especially rapid growth, you want to make sure that your first responders are able to support uh, having a safe environment for the people that are, uh, coming into the city and maintain that type of safe, uh, uh, family-felt environment. And so you want to make sure that you're also talking with those people, your police staff, force, your, your firefighters, to make sure that there's a plan there to be able to grow and support the, um, incoming residents and making sure that our cities remain safe and family-friendly. So I would, uh, have ongoing meetings with them, uh, and talking with them about what are their plans? What are they seeing? What are the types of things that they feel are necessary in order to continue to be able to grow? Maybe we need to have another station in some of the newer areas, or a substation or something like that, to have a quicker response to the citizens if they're in times of need. So I think we have to look at, at, at all of those factors together. And like I said, forecasting is, is important. So, uh, for us to meet not only with what we're currently dealing with, but what is coming in the near future, two, three, four years out.
Okay. Ms. Hart, could you take the question, please?
Um, one thing that I think is impacting the citizens of this community is, um, really COVID-19 is infecting everybody, and it's one thing that's concerned, and it affects what we do, where we go, um, even how we attend school. Um, so that is something that I will like to definitely, um, make sure that with the vaccines being out now, that we, as, um, for me, for an example, being an example, as to making sure that, um, social distancing, wearing my mask, um, hand sanitizing, um, for an example. But also, it's important that we get our religious leaders and our city leaders involved as to being an example, and, um, also encouraging our residents to, um, take the vaccine, uh, when it becomes available. And I think that if you have it in our religion, as our religious community, our faith-based community, pastors and ministers being an example there, I think it will also trickle down into its parishioners to continue to encourage them to take the vaccine, so that hopefully things will get better. We won't have to wear the mask. But hopefully, that's, um, I think that's one of the concerns of the community with COVID-19. Another thing is Clark Road, infrastructure, um, that has been in the making for a long time. I know, because I have to go down Clark Road every day to get home. Um, so it's, it's been on the docket, if I may say that, but like a better word, for a long time. But it's good to know that it's in the making. Um, I've been talking to the Planning and Zoning Director. He has been keeping me informed as to what's going on, so I was pleased to know that, even before it was announced on this past board meeting, that it was in the making. And it was good to know that I was able to, um, you know, just to share that with the residents um, that I had been fortunate to meet. Um, another thing that I would like to, um, uh, say is diversity. Um, I want to be able to promote diversity and bring more minorities and businesses into the community. Um, one thing about that is that we will be able to work together. Um, we have to work together. So, and it starts with leadership. So when you see there's, um, discrepancies within leadership of the city, that is a problem, and I think we can do better. And that's one reason why I am running, because I, I know we can do better and to be an example for our citizens and make our city something, as a beacon of light for other cities that we can be very proud of. So leadership, uh, we have to really work together to move the city forward. If there's contentions there, it won't be, but you know, it's like, United, United we stand, divided we fall. So we have to work together and to move the city forward. So I'm excited for this opportunity.
Thank you. If I could just quickly ask a follow-up question. When you say, uh, better diversity and leadership, are you, are you talking about the city staff particularly?
Well, we have to work together. Um, I've been, um, and unfortunately, it's some meetings, and it speaks for itself, and you could go back and pull the tapes. But when there's contentions, as it was expressed by, you know, um, other commissioners, um, it's there. So it's nothing that's surprising. Um, a recent article came out in Orlando Sentinel that expressed that. So it's nothing new, but what I'm saying with that, we must work together. We must have to work together, and that's one thing that I want to emphasize. Um, be able to work, regardless of your differences, you know what? When you sit in the seat as a commissioner, or mayor, or whatever position you hold, where you're responsible for people of the community, and that's what I'm passionate about, you need to take that responsibility serious and put the people of the community first. Not a personal agenda, for whatever reason, but to work together. So therefore, yes, leadership has to work together to move the city forward, and that's what I intend to do.
I have a, a question for all four of you. It's a little bit different for, uh, for the incumbent, but I'll, I'll, I'll start with Ms. Hart. What is a decision that the commission has made, let, let's say in the last year or two, that you have disagreed with? And, and if, if you could be as specific as you can, but also brief, I'd appreciate it.
Basically, I'm just, you know, there's so many different things. I, I can't really pinpoint one thing in particular, um, the decision, because there are so many things that's involved. And, um, I go by fats, and I take that as my, my nursing experience, where I assume anything. Um, I go strictly on fats, but because the decisions that may have been made are, um, brought forth to the commission to vote on, there's things that may have happened in the background or that brought it together for them to come vote on, that I may not have been, that I'm not privy to, that I can't honestly say that, hey, um, I agree and disagree, because I don't know how that decision came about. So honestly, I cannot say that I, um, agree, I have an opinion about it, pretty much. So that's my stance on that. Thank you.
All right. Well, if I could, if I could press you a little bit on that. I mean, the, the, the documents that are the basis for most decisions that are made are public record, and they hold their meetings, I hope, in the sunshine. So, um, I mean, information should be available to someone like you to decide, like, I didn't like their vote on this thing or that thing. So can, can you, can you not cite a, a, a vote that was taken that you would have, if you were, had been on the commission, where you would have voted differently?
Well, I, I would say that I would have to research that, I, I, because, um, like I said, I go by fats, and I don't talk off the top of my head. So I would have to research that, although it may have been available to me. Um, I may, I have not come in, you know, contact with any information, because, but my... So therefore, that's my stance on that. Although it may have been privy to me, I wasn't, um, uh, evident, I did not have it in my possession to really espouse on the different things.
Mr. Richardson, same question for you. Can you cite a, uh, specific decision in the last year that the commission has made that you disagreed with?
Not sure if it was a commission decision, uh, to be honest. But, uh, and it's probably, uh, what most would see as a small, um, maybe not really important decision. But the outsourcing of the, uh, crossing guards was something that, um, I'm aware of. And, uh, a crossing guard used to work very closely with the police department. As a matter of fact, they were, uh, police department had oversight of our school car crossing guards. And in the last year or so, um, that's been outsourced, the management of it been outsourced to a company out of California. Um, some of the feedback that I've heard, um, I just so happen, my wife is involved in it, is that there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of things that have changed, and there's some, uh, they're having a lot of trouble keeping that staff, uh, staff properly. And, um, I just want to say, while it seems small, um, crossing guards interface with our children quite regularly. I mean, they're sometimes the first people that see them on their way to school, and the last people to see them as they're leaving the school. And, um, I just wanted to make sure that our kids have, you know, um, there's enough people to staff that to keep them safe while they're going to and from school. I've even heard about a couple of incidents where, you know, there were, um, people trying to maybe kidnap a kid or so, and because of a crossing guard being there and being involved, it, um, was able to divert that and, and avoid that type of situation. I don't know if that was brought publicly, but it was, um, reported to the police department. And so that's just one small decision that I'm aware of, that, um, I have some background with.
Thank you. Mr. Keller, same question for you. You obviously covered this at a, from a different angle as a former commissioner, but what's a, what's the biggest thing in the past year that maybe you haven't discussed that was a decision that you disagreed with?
The one that immediately comes to mind is, um, and it's sort of a small, I suppose, smaller than the general thing of it, but, uh, the, um, new development that's going in on McCormick Road. Um, when they created the development, one of the things that, um, I had looked at and wanted to see done, and, uh, at the time, I was sitting on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I, I got it, uh, as a amendment to the Planning and Zoning, but it didn't go anywhere with the, um, with the actual commissioners when, when they had the final vote on it. But on that, one of the things that I was looking at was having the development changed a little bit so that the road that's coming out of the subdivision would line up with Damon Road. Um, McCormick Road is going to be the next Clark Road. It's go, it needs to be widened, it needs to, uh, uh, definitely have some traffic lights added to it, uh, that especially once they add this new subdivision. By not lining up the roads, it's going to make it much more difficult for the, um, people coming out of Damon Road, uh, to be able to make the left turns. It's going to be difficult for the people coming out of the new subdivision to make left turns onto McCormick Road. Um, it's going to create traffic nightmare. It would have been much easier if they had, and there was land and property in the, in the subdivision plan that was approved, to move those roads so that they would have lined up. Uh, these are the things that, while it seems miniscule, are very important down the road, because everybody knows what it's like when all of a sudden you can't get out of a road. Um, and making it so that the traffic light would have lined it up so that everybody could have made easy left turns when they needed to out of both subdivisions onto McCormick Road, and the fact of just how congested McCormick Road is right now, and how much more congested it's going to be, uh, once the subdivision's in there. I think that's the thing that, uh, that was the most recent one that I and the commission disagreed with.
Thank you for that. Um, Mr. Oliver, slightly different question for you, and obviously in the position you've been in, but I know that you've had, uh, had your disagreements with the mayor in the past. What, um, what's been a decision that you've come down on the wrong side of the vote on the, of the city commission that, uh, that really, I guess, is most important and maybe rankles you the most?
It's getting to the point, sometimes I, I disagree with, with things when it deals with infrastructure. It deals with, uh, developers not being held accountable. Um, it, it's getting to the point where I'm, I'm, I'm being nicknamed four to one. So, uh, I'm that one. But nonetheless, I, Mr. Mr. Keller touched bases on, uh, he touched, he, uh, touched base on a very important issue, and that's the, uh, development on McCormick Road. Matter of fact, I had a, a public meeting, I invited two thousand residents to come to this meeting, when, uh, the developer decided they weren't going to meet or talk to us about adding a light to a, a very busy intersection at the end of McCormick Road and Apoca Violet. So he was actually in that meeting, and I, I voted no to that subdivision. Uh, I fell on the other side, again, another four to one. The other commissioners thought it was, it would be okay. And I think that the issue that they have there is, the other commissioners, and, and probably including the mayor, had never really traveled up through McCormick and seen what we deal with on a day-to-day basis. McCormick Road is kind of boxed in. We're boxing on, on, to the east of McCormick, you have, um, Apoca Violet Road and McCormick. To the, to the west, you have, uh, Ocoee-Parker Road and McCormick there. And it, and there's no other roads that go all the way through from McCormick except Clark ends right at McCormick Road. So it kind of boxes us in. Now you have a developer, uh, D.R. Horton come, came into town. They want to build three hundred and seventy-seven homes, but they don't want to put a light at, at the corner of Apoca Violet and, uh, McCormick Road. Now you're adding three hundred and seventy-seven homes. Now you're talking about almost seven hundred vehicles about to hit the road in a intersection that's already plagued with traffic accidents, fatalities, and, and just, you just cannot get to, to the, uh, the intersection. So I challenged them, and, uh, and I fought to, uh, get that traffic light there. Uh, now I'm in the middle of a fight with the county and the developer, who actually found, there's actually funds, then I did find out, the funds are available. They're there. There's about eight hundred thousand dollars that's sitting there in a credit to D.R. Horton. Not only does D.R. Horton has three hundred and seventy-seven homes being built on McCormick, if you go, uh, a mile heading west, uh, on the same road, on McCormick Road, there's almost another thousand homes being built on the same road, on both of those, those developments. And they have yet to come forth with an infrastructure plan to widen McCormick Road or to, uh, add, add a light on both ends, on either ends. So also, Clark Road, we're putting, uh, uh, eighty-eight town halls on Clark Road. I voted no to that when they first brought it to me. They told me they were grandfathered in, and we had nothing, uh, there, there was no other recourse for us as a city to, uh, stop them from doing this, or to vote no on it, unless we'd be sued. And I, and, and the, the thing that really baffled me about that was the fact that they came with no, uh, there was no, no study, no, no traffic study at all, and they had a traffic study from almost twenty-five years ago, and it just didn't make any sense at all. So I couldn't vote on those kind of things. And I think that there's a little contention, uh, between myself and some of the, uh, I probably have to say the mayor. Um, so I'm just going to call it what it is, because we have different ideas about how to do things, how to make things work. So it's not a matter of, of, of us sitting there bickering over different things. It's a matter of saying, well, I, I want to move forward, he wants to move forward. We have different ideas about it, and we're both passionate about it. I certainly understand that. But again, I, I'm never, I'm never rude towards him. I'm just simply saying that I'm really standing up for what's right for not only the citizens of Ocoee, but what's right for how we spend our tax dollars and how responsible we are when it comes to our development and our infrastructure, and also making sure that we're taking care of our citizens. Uh, last case in point, I, I wrap it up right here. I had, uh, there was an elderly lady that approached me, and she said to me, she said, "I want to thank you for standing up for yourself." And I said, "Well, okay, not a problem." And she said, "You know what? If you can't stand up for yourself, you can't stand up for me." She said, "So you know what? Keep doing what you're doing, sir. Stand up for the citizens of Ocoee, and keep doing what you're doing, and I'm going to continue to, to fight for the citizens of Ocoee, and make sure that, that we are, are moving forward together in this city."
Um, I, I think we're, uh, I think we're out of questions. Uh, I want to thank, uh, all four of you for, uh, participating in this discussion. We sure do appreciate it, and, uh, and I want to wish all of you the best of luck. Thanks very much for your time.